This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I will call the regular council meeting of Monday, November 17, 2025 to order.
Councilmember Carrier?
Here.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Here.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
And Mayor Pocatán Walchett?
Yes, excuse me. Um, please rise for the pledge of belief.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, um, we're done. We're down to three approval of the agenda as printed. By Cruz. Second, if I could, Bridget, to approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Councilmember Carrier?
Right.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Motion clear.
Are there any modifications to the agenda this evening? Approval of the minutes of regular session, November 3, 2025. Are there any corrections or addition? No, it will stand as printed. We are down to public comments. Public comment is citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. And all comments should be directed to the council and not to the public. Anyone? Julie?
It was hard to hear your lovely voice.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Julie Gondula. I'm a citizen here in Alpena. And good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm here to give comment, and I have a couple handouts after the fact, but it's just about what I'm saying. So it's for your reference afterwards. But I'm here to give comment on ordinance 25-514, which amends Chapter 10, Animals of the Code of Ordinances. The solutions are out there. I know this is a valuable concern to people who love animals and maybe weren't even cat lovers, right? Because we're specifically talking about feral cats on this. But let's focus on those solutions and not the symptoms. That's predominantly what I'd like to say tonight. And let us choose a code that does not repeat the mistakes of other communities and does not reflect cruelty, but rather a code that learns from others and reflects the deep heart of the Alpena community. I'm deeply concerned about this proposed revision, and I'm deeply concerned for several reasons. The first of these is that it does not actually address the feral cat overpopulation issue. The second, it's a sweeping in its generalization that community cats are nuisance. The third is that it ignores that feeding feral cats can protect ecosystems. Fourth, it takes away from finding real solutions because we think we're solving the problem. Fifth, it's unenforceable. And finally, it ultimately has proven to be inhumane. So let me explain each point briefly. One, this code does not actually address the feral cat overpopulation issue. A couple of facts make up this point. A, this proposed approach, as used with wildlife, treats cats as if they are wildlife when they are not. Their population, birth rate specifically, and their existence is not tied to the environment in the same way, which is true for wildlife. On the contrary, their population is directly tied to humans and has been for approximately 10,000 years. They function in step with human. All you have to do is capture a feral cat and observe it, use a litter box. Doesn't have to be taught. There's something to that. And they rely on proximity for humans for a significant degree of food. So to say they're independent and wild is not the evolved reality for cats. Not to mention that we breed and/or refrain from spaying and neutering them only to release them outdoors, humans, that is. So even if every new generation was starved out, we stopped helping them, there would be a new generation waiting to take their place. It doesn't address the issue. B, feeding bans don't work. I'm not making this up. This is the reality of other communities' experiences. They have been tried and they have been found to be notoriously ineffective and inhumane. Removing feeding stations creates food scarcity, in other words, starvation, particularly in urban environments where food is already scarce and where the line between feral, stray, and domestic is very skewed. The idea that these cats are entirely self-sufficient and left to their own devices would be self-supporting is not supported by the facts or the experience of other communities that have tried feeding bans. Here's a couple quotes from the experts. Cats won't disappear if you remove feeding areas. They will suffer. Searching for food more desperately in the trash, hunting wildlife. Starving cats get sick, and then they actually spread more disease. They roam further, fight more, and become a bigger public health issue. TNR is the only effective tool for feral stray cat populations. And that then becomes impossible without feeding stations. Finally, it punishes kindness with no real solution. That's from Watching Over Whiskers. Another quote, feeding bans are difficult to enforce and highly ineffective, ASPCA. Another quote, as communities across the U.S. consider how to best manage their population of unowned, free-roaming cats, an option often proposed is an outright ban on residents feeding feral animals. The relevant science suggests, however, that such policies are not only unlikely to reduce free-roaming cat populations, but they actually might backfire and increase their numbers, the National Feline Research Council. And moreover, this is universally backed by the Animal Humane Society and many other organizations. Finally, on this point, we don't live on an island. If by some magical sweep of our wands, we were to erase all the feral cats in Alpena, they would be replaced because it causes a vacuum by our neighboring communities' feral cats. It's not the way to address the problem, is what we have found. Which brings me to my second point. This code is sweeping in its generalization that community cats are nuisance. The existence of feral cats is not the problem. It's their overpopulation that's the problem. Overpopulation and disease are the most commonly cited concerns, and rightly so. Removing mitigating food sources, however, addresses neither of these. No food station simply means a starvation response, as I have indicated already. Moreover, many communities function well with community cats, not only taking pride and care in them, but enjoying the rewards of having their specific and superb skill sets, which is basically being eco-friendly predators, those working cats. Not to mention that their mere presence keeps feral cats from other territories from moving in. No vacuum, it's self-balancing. Thirdly, feeding feral cats diminishes their hunting habits. Eliminating this food source, as per the suggested code, would only increase the starvation drive behind their hunting. While it does not erase their hunting instincts, which is the upside of that pest control point I made just a moment ago, but it would at least diminish it. And if you erase that, they would be hunting from the starvation instinct.
Interrupt, but you got 30 more seconds.
Okay, so I'm leaving this with you. Moral of story, I'm going to go to the end point. I'm going to leave the rest with you. You've got a lot to say on this. This has been tried and true in other communities, that it will only lead to suffering. There are many other solutions that can reflect on the Alpena community that would be more science-based and more heartfelt, the deep heart of the Alpena community that I know is connected to the environment. One in particular has already been implemented. It's called Target Zero. I'm putting them in all the packets. You can see the research I've done. There's many other better options. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else? I'm going to go to online.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for people online. So is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak?
Edna Sorensen.
Edna, go ahead. I think you're muted. You're muted, I think, Edna.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Edna Sorensen, and I live at 305 Partridge Avenue. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Northeast Michigan TNR about the new feral cat ordinance you're considering passing. If you stop feeding these animals, they don't magically disappear. Now you have cats going through dumpsters and trash cans for food. Females can get pregnant at four months and have up to four litters a year. This will not be solved by your ordinance. Since 2017, Northeast Michigan TNR has trained hundreds of people to trap, neuter, and return feral cats. We provide the live traps and other supplies needed to do the trapping. If needed, we can provide volunteers to assist with trapping. Our total last year was over 400 animals fixed and returned to their environment, plus hundreds of kittens that were fixed, socialized, and rehomed. So far this year, we've had almost 300 fixed, with another 40 scheduled between now and February. The main drawbacks to our work is our shortage of veterinary services and of money. White's Your Veterinary Clinic and New Beginnings Veterinary Services are the only two veterinary offices in this area accepting TNR appointments. We've as far as worn and flint for veterinary services to keep up with the demand. Our major funding is from Community Foundation of Northeast Michigan grants, from items we sell at our awareness tables at craft shows, and from donations. The concept of trap, neuter, and return is that the animals are trapped, neutered or spayed so that they cannot produce any more kittens, and then returned to their environment. This is often the only home they've known since they were abandoned. These are people who are willing to sustain their environment by feeding them, provided that they don't have to worry about the clod growing any larger because the females have been spayed and the males have been neutered. I would ask that you table this proposed change and seek additional information about fixing the problem. We would be happy to meet with you to explain our program in greater detail and help the city work out an acceptable solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the... Okay, I'll go back to the audience one more time. Anyone? Okay, I'm closing public comments. We have no public hearing. We're down to consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,048,211.18 and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soy to sign the law. B, approval of the municipal council meeting schedule for 2026. C, approval of a budget amendment request to uncommit $6,000 from the CPR AED committed fund balance in the general fund and to increase the expense for the AED training supplies in the same amount. D, approve the city to opt out of the Michigan Public Act 152 for calendar year 2026, which allows the city to contribute to the employee's health savings account and employees to pay 20% of their monthly premiums. E, transfer the payroll and tax custodial accounts from Huntington Bank to Nicolay National Bank and authorize Mayor/City Manager Rachel Smolinski to sign the documentation. F, appoint Councilman Kevin Carrier and Councilman Danny Mitchell as the alternate to the Thunder Bay Transportation Authority Board.
Move we approve the consent agenda as presented and pay the bills in the amount of $1,048,211.18 and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soy to sign the warrant.
Second.
Councilman Mitchell made the motion. Councilmember Carrier supported. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Hollishead?
Hi.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Councilmember Carrier? Motion clear.
We have no presentations, but we have two announcements this evening. So A is the Bowens Jewelry Holiday Parade will be held on Friday, November 28 at 5:30 p.m. with the tree lighting ceremony immediately following at Colligan Plaza. And B, Fire Chief Robert Edmonds will be retiring on November 30. A retirement celebration will be held on Saturday, November 29 at the Alpena City Fire Department from 12 to 4 p.m., and the public is invited. So stop by and see Chief Edmonds and wish him well on his next adventure. We're going to miss him. So, um, this proclamation on Veterans Day, I have received a phone call from Carl Peterson asking if we would designate the city as a Purple Heart City. We put that in motion, and I said yes. So I read the proclamation at the event on City Hall Room. I just want to reiterate the proclamation at this meeting so council knows what we did. So proclamation of the City of Alpena recognizing the City of Alpena as a Purple Heart City, whereas the City of Alpena has a proud history of supporting our active military and veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, and whereas the Purple Heart Medal was the first award made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to the members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded in combat or have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms, being killed in action against a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill amongst combat wounded veterans and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure that we never forget the sacrifices of our military servicemen and women. And whereas Alpena has a large veteran population, with many of its veterans being Purple Heart recipients, and whereas Alpena appreciates the sacrifices of all of its military veterans, combat veterans, Purple Heart recipients, and their families for the sacrifices that they have made in defending our freedoms, and wants to express our gratitude to honor them. Now, therefore, I, Cindy Johnson, Mayor of Alpena, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the City of Alpena as a Purple Heart City and hereby encourages the residents and businesses of Alpena to show their appreciation for sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and support they have earned. So with this designation, we will have two plaques that come that will be at the entrances of both of the city, and we will have a plaque that we will get to hang at City Hall. So it is an absolute honor to do this for them, and they look well. So, just so everyone knows. Now we're down to the report of officers. This is the second reading of ordinance 25-514, which amends Chapter 10, Animals. And I've had a discussion with the city manager and city attorney just a bit ago. And because of the traffic on this particular subject that has come in throughout the day, I'm asking that we postpone this until perhaps our next meeting, and we can determine that so that we can collect more information, have discussions with groups that want to meet with us, and find out from the county what their plan is for feral cats. They are in charge of animal control countywide, and that includes all animals. So I would like to know what their plan is, because actually, this is something that they should be doing. So if everyone agrees, we can postpone this until, do you want to do it till our first meeting? We have to have time to pull meetings together.
We need a motion to...
Yes.
Yes, and my suggestion would be probably the second one in December.
In December.
Because number first is going to creep up on us pretty quick, the holiday and everything.
Right.
So...
The 15th.
The 15th. So I will entertain the motion to postpone if all are in favor.
I'll move to postpone the decision of ordinance, pardon me, 25-514, and we have more information, and we have discussed it more with people who are willing to help.
Excuse me, 514?
Oh, is it... What did I say?
44.
Pardon me. Ordinance 25-514. That way I can't mess up.
I'll support that.
Yeah, and we'll put it on the December 15.
And we will put it on December 15.
I think he said...
Danny, did you support that?
Yes.
Okay, Danny supported. So we have a motion by Bridget to postpone ordinance 25-514 and add it to December 15 council meeting so that we can collect more information, who was supported by Danny. Is there any discussion? Anna, take the lead.
Mayor Johnson?
Hi.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Councilmember Carrier?
Hi.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Hi.
Motion clear.
So now we're down to Alpena Housing Commission Property Management Agreement, and and I just want to let everyone know that Lindsey from the Housing Commission is here, so if we have any questions, she might not want to answer them, but she's here. Welcome, Lindsey.
All right, so the property management agreement that you have in front of you and in the packet formalizes the Alpena Housing Commission's role in managing the low-income housing units on city-owned properties. The agreement also outlines AHC's responsibilities for leasing, rent collection, maintenance inspections, compliance with HUD and state regulations, environmental review, documentation, and staffing. All at AHC's sole cost and expense. The city retains ownership of the properties and provides oversight through inspections and its role as the responsible entity for environmental review documentation. The agreement sets clear termination provisions, insurance requirements, and ensures all use of the property complies with existing low-income housing restrictions. Additionally, the agreement provides clarity, protects the city's interest, and ensures continued proper management and compliance for these housing units. I have a recommended motion, but I did receive some feedback from council regarding adding a note in there, a section in there about the recycling surcharge, because it is, they're not taxed because of the payment in lieu of tax agreements, but we wanted to make sure that that was in there, you know, as part of the agreement, and it discussed any, you know, future millages that may be passed for that. So I did send you that proposed language, and Ms. Klein and their attorney are good with that language, and Bill, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we will.
All right.
And Lindsey, if you would like to say anything, you're welcome to. You don't have to, though.
Well, this has been a long time coming, you know, situation. When Rachel and I both came into our roles, obviously Rachel came in about two to three years prior to me coming in my role, but both of us came into the realization that there has not been any documentation agreement between Alpena Housing Commission and the city since 1990. Now, that was a year after I was born, and Rachel was still in high school.
Yes.
That's a long time.
I think I just...
Bring in the kind of money we bring in, you know, and we are solely ran, and yet the city owns the land, and there's nothing in writing. I mean, the liability, the level of just, I mean, everything that you can think of. So we really wanted to come to the agreement of having something in writing. That way, when and if that ever happens, there's a clear understanding between the relationship between the two of us and a working relationship moving forward. So.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Thank you, Lindsey. So I'm going to make this motion, and then we can discuss if there's discussion. So I'm going to make the motion to move to approve the property management agreement between the City of Alpena and the Alpena Housing Commission and to authorize Mayor Cindy Johnson to sign all necessary documents with, including the recycling surcharge responsibility extraordinary. I'm going to read it just so that it's read in public. Pursuant to the intergovernmental agreement between Alpena County and Northeast Michigan Materials Management and Authority, all housing units owned or managed by the Alpena Housing Commission shall be subject to the recycling surcharge established by name. AHC shall be responsible for payment of the recycling surcharge for each unit as assessed and invoiced. Further, AHC acknowledges and agrees that any future voter-approved millages, special assessment, or taxes levied for the purpose of funding recycling, waste reduction, or materials management programs are applicable to AHC-managed or AHC-owned housing units. Because such charges are not exempt under the payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreements applicable to the property, AHC shall be fully responsible for payment of any such millages, taxes, or assessments. So that is part of my motion.
And I apologize, Mayor. I forgot to mention the correction in the bylaws for Section 3.06. There is an incomplete sentence, and at the end of that, it says, "In the event of a conflict," but it doesn't... I don't think it should be there, so it has to just be taken up.
I'm going to include that. That's not something we can fix, but I'm going, I want to put it in my motion in Section 3.06, that there is a typo in that section, and that we recognize that. You need to fix it. It's just a partial sentence. Okay. So, do you have support? I made the motion.
Supported.
Support by Commissioner Mitchell. Is there any discussion? Kevin has a question.
No, I think I'd just like to get with you outside of this. You can kind of explain everything to me. I'm fascinated by it all, so, yeah.
And I can tell you, I had a wonderful conversation with Lindsey. She does a wonderful job with the Housing Commission and the people who live in those buildings. I cannot thank you enough for what you do. So if at any time you want to have a conversation with Lindsey, I would encourage it.
Thank you. Thanks.
She's going to have to make a point, but we'll tell everybody here.
Okay. But is there any discussion about the motion on the table?
No. Thank you.
No? Want me to read that all again? Anna?
Hopefully, our recording is picking it up this time. Last meeting cut out.
Do you want me to read it again, just in case?
Uh, no, I got it.
Okay.
I've got it in the memo, and I've got the email, and then I will also get the change.
Okay, just 3.0, in Section 3.06. Okay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Hi.
Councilmember Carrier?
Hi.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Hi.
And Mayor Johnson. Motion clear.
Thank you. So now we're down to council committee reports. Bridget, do you...
Don't have anything?
Kevin, do you have anything?
Hoping to have the transport one soon here.
Okay. That'll be a good committee.
Hey. No, NIMCOG is not till January.
Are the people in the habitat houses?
There's one moving into the one closest to the school today, so. So once they're all in there, I'm going to be taking a welcome basket over.
If you want any company, you know.
Oh, that'd be good, yeah.
I would also attend.
Mine is all the jams and jellies that I have made canned. It's like this, so.
I could put something together, yeah.
You go shopping my...
Danny's basement. And I have nothing major to report at this particular time for my committee. No communications or petitions, no unfinished business. We are down to new business. We have 2026 ambulance fee schedule proposal, and Deputy Chief, Fire Chief Andy Marso is here.
Good evening, council.
Hello, Andy. Fireman Andy.
Yeah. This is something we have to do every year, or whenever the increases, so we can stay on the up and up. In discussing our ambulance fee schedule with our contracted EMS biller provider, Mobile Health Resources, it was suggested we review and update our current fee schedule for the ambulance services we provide to remain current with allowable and approved fees. The new approved rates were just provided to us at the end of October due to a new revision timeline by Blue Cross Blue Shield and CMS. In the past, this adjustment has been requested to coincide with the city's fiscal year as the newly published approval rates were not available until the new calendar year. Third-party insurers like Medicare, Medicaid, and Blue Cross establish allowable fees for ambulance services and publish those revisions annually as they change. By not adjusting our rates and underbilling, we are essentially using tax money to subsidize commercial insurance profits and leave us with less revenue to operate from. Any allowable increase assists in our long-term sustainability to provide key essential EMS services to the community for the future. Based on the annual revisions to allowable fees, I am recommending the following ambulance rate increases for approval effective January 1, 2026. And yes, you can see in the, there, it's 5% across the board. It's more than what we've had in the last couple of years, but that's come right from our biller. We work hand-in-hand with MHR and Barb, who is the gal that I work directly with. Our inter-local ambulance agreement with Alpena County requires that we secure... Our inter-local ambulance agreement with Alpena County requires that we secure Alpena County's approval to raise ambulance fees by more than five percent. As none of these rates increase succeed the five percent allowability, I do not need to present the fee schedule to the full board of the Alpena County Commissioners for approval before the effective implementation implementation date. I have a recommended motion, uh, motion to approve the twenty twenty-six ambulance fee schedule as proposed to be effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
Like to make motion.
And 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 Andy, this till then, this will go till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six?
Yep.
Correct. Ends the year, doesn't run with our with our budget.
Got my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Once you guys approve it here, then I do go to county uh, Courts of Public Safety meeting on December fifteenth to present to them, just so they're aware.
Okay. Okay. Okay, entertain. A motion, and then we can discuss a bit more.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six ambulance fee schedule as proposed to be effective January, January first, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
So motion by Courier um, to approve the twenty twenty-six ambulance ambulance fee schedule as proposed to be effective January first, twenty twenty-six, and supported by Mitchell. Any discussion? Any questions for Andy?
I'm a little bit, is this, okay, so I just with all the insurance and all the variables and different thing. I never like to see prices go up for anything, you know, but obviously if it's necessary, I'm just trying to make sense of the, so are these the totals that are like charged to the insurance then?
Yes, so the insurance raises the rates, right, every year, just like when you go to a doctor's office?
Right.
They say you can charge three hundred. So we're just trying to stay in coordinates with the insurance company that, which their allowable billable amount. So we don't fall behind.
Right.
That makes sense.
Like I said, there's just so many.
We're leaving money on the table if we don't raise it.
Right.
They allow us to go to those amounts. We don't set the fees.
Right.
Blue Cross and Shield and Medicare and Medicaid, and we were doing it kind of like midway through the year, but we're leaving six months on the table.
Right.
Now we've adjusted it. Chief Edmonds has done it uh, last couple of years. He's came at the same meeting this time around and presented it here, and then we take it to county uh, Courts of Public Safety meeting. Again, we don't have to get their approval, because it still meets the criteria in the county intergovernmental uh, contract in one service.
Thank you.
All right, we even up the raises and whatnot, where that's taking money away from the city.
Okay.
Here, it's built in the contracts if they get a raise, so that's
Okay.
I know the the raise and all those things are kind of budgeted in, pre-built in. So is the five percent increase uh, staying consistent with where everything is, or are we just kind of trying to stay under, so we can
We could only go to the five percent, and that's what the billing company, you know, we don't set the rates, obviously. And I refer back to the MHR biller, uh, who we were hand-in-hand with, and they're great. And that's what she said the new billing rates are, and then she said go five percent, because that's what's allowable. And we're staying equal to or just above where we can, Bill.
We're just
Yes. Yep. Thank you.
You too. Sorry.
Good.
It's a motion. Did I read the motion again?
I read the motion, but I don't know if I supposed to.
Councilmember Courier did.
And I and I repeated it. So Courier, Danny supported, I read it. So, roll call.
Councilmember Courier?
Aye.
Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we are down to the Duck Park Development of Pavilion and Restroom Project, and we have um, City Engineer Steve Phil.
Right, at long last. September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, the city received an open bid for the the Duck Park Development of the Pavilion and Restrooms. Project is for the installation of a new pavilion and restroom facilities as part of the River Center. The bids were sent to nineteen firms, as well as posted on the city's website with three bids received, uh, as follows in the memo. Um, reading, contracting, uh, reading low. Uh, this project is partially funded by an MDR, MDNR Land and Water Grant received by the city in twenty twenty-two. The city applied for the grant on behalf of the Thunder Bay River Center Board. At that time, the project was estimated at three hundred and fifty-one thousand by the River Center Board, and as such, they requested a hundred and fifty thousand from the DNR and agreed to fund the match of two hundred and one thousand. After the bids were received, staff reached out to Todd Todd Britton of Meridian Contracting to review the project for any modifications that might be made to the project. After reviewing the plans and submitted bid pricing, it was determined that there was not any one or two items that could really be eliminated or modified that would be in, that wouldn't already be an overall detriment to the whole project. Um, nothing's gonna save two hundred and some thousand dollars. We 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 thought maybe it was a little too fancy, maybe we could, you know, scrimp, and it just wasn't there. Um, and so after the bids were received, city staff members also talked with River Center Board, uh, members of the River Center Board and reviewed the available funding on the and the board's finances. A review synopsis is shown in my memo, um, and as noted, the project is receiving funds from both a youth and recreation and an MDNR land and water grant. Additionally, the city has regularly committed funds uh, to the River Center project and has established a current committed fund balance of sixty thousand available to help fund the project. Um, I've been told recently that that is up to sixty-five thousand, and by the end of the year, another five thousand will be added, so we'll have seventy thousand to work with. Um, these three committed or granted amounts totaled two hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. The River Center Committee also provided the city with their fund fundraising balances available for the project. And between the various funds available through the River Center Committee, there's enough funding to proceed with the project at this time. For our grant agreement, the DNR was notified of our bid tab results and the contractor selection. They have approved both submittals, and the city has successfully worked with Meridian Contracting in the past and is satisfied with work. Uh, I have the following motion there to award the project to Meridian Contracting. Um, this would be a spring build. Um, we don't know the timing yet on it exactly. We don't know the the duration, I guess, at this point, but um, Meridian is also building the Bayview Restrooms, so you know, whenever that those finish up in the springtime and he has people available, we'll go over to the Duck Park and and start that project. So it's really uh, determined on on the contractor at this point, so.
Um, so do we want to make a motion, and then we can discuss?
Please, may I?
Yes, you may.
I I've been working on this project since I was Alpena Commission all those many years ago. And I'm, I've constantly been after Steve, I've constantly been after Rachel about this, it's like this, but I'm good to see this. So I would move that we approve uh, uh, Meridian Contracting of Alpena in the amount of five hundred twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for construction of the Island Park Bathrooms Pavilion.
And it is Duck Park.
Duck Park.
Is there support?
Second, sorry.
Um, motion made by Danny to award the contract to Meridian in an amount of five hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for the twenty twenty-five Duck Park Development of Pavilion and Restroom Project. Second by Courier, supported by Courier. Any discussion? Questions?
I think this is the first project that you've spoken about trying to actually backtrack the costs of it, like speaking to them if there's any modifications. Is that just where we're at financially with the cost of things?
Well, what it was is, you know, you kind of base that around the grant, and you go, well, you know, the grant plus plus what the board was willing to do was three hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, that number, I believe, came from the board. They had talked with some local folks, and this was before any any design plans were even made. Since then, the design came out, you know, and we're fast forward quite a few years on this too, so your your prices change, availability contractors change. Um, so it was quite a substantial amount over what that that original amount was. And so we were just trying to find a way to make it make it happen without spending all the money. It's not gonna work, so we kind of worked it out with with the board and and, you know, we can, we can put that money upfront with the understanding that the city will get those those grand dollars back.
Is this, uh, in your opinion, from other buildings of this size you've seen, is this a fair cost, or I'm I'm kind of just curious, uh, because I've seen everything else just skyrocket. I'm wondering if this is in par with the skyrocketing price of materials cost by a contractor.
That's a portion of it, sure. That's a portion of it. Um, and and like I said, availability, you know, contractors, either whether they, but the generally the prices are just higher when you have a limited amount of people that are available for these projects. Um, and I mean, it it didn't come as any surprise, you know, we we saw that Meridian was low, and that's great. But looking at where Devere was and where Spence Brothers was, you know, their their prices were quite a bit higher than that. So we feel this is a pretty good, pretty good price for for what we're getting.
Yes, I'm, yeah, my biggest thing is, we have money saved for these things, budgeted for these things, but since prices are skyrocketing, I wonder if this is gonna keep happening. Budget can't keep up with the prices going up for the buildings that we want to do.
You're doing less, yeah, you'd just be doing le- less projects. Exactly.
Is that where we're okay?
That's that's kind of where we're headed. Um, we'll see, and that's why we're we're always looking for grants, you know? Um, anything that we can get is, that's half, or, you know, I mean, like the Culligan Plaza project was eighty-five percent funded by grants. So I mean, that's, I mean, you find one of those every once in a while, it's kind of nice. Uh, I'm increasing our PFAS testing. Uh, that grant was no match. That was two hundred thousand dollars worth of testing that that's coming our way that we can use. Um, and that, that was a, that was one that we, it was on a consent agenda to approve, because there's no match, no city dollars are involved. So, you know, we gotta look for that stuff.
Yes.
You know, so.
Probably looking.
Similar insights to the Bayview Restrooms?
No, no, this is just a, this is a learning pavilion with a with a roof on it and some seating in there, and then two um, working, the bathrooms are almost identical to what went in at Bayview or at Culligan Plaza. That size of bathroom, just two family bathrooms and utility area, and that's a tech, you know, kind of on the outside of a a large, just outdoor pavilion.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
Question?
Uh, Councilmember Hollishead?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Courier?
Thank you.
I'm sick of you.
I'm taking a mo- a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
And.